Good afternoon again, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Prattville Planning Commission. And, uh... What we're gonna do, we're gonna address what we have before us, if it's alright. And Mr. Smith, would you, uh... Give reason why we are delayed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission. Yes, sir. We have three items on this agenda tonight to be addressed. Unfortunately, we will only be able to-
Would you speak up so everyone can hear you?
Yes, sir. We have three items on this agenda tonight. Unfortunately, we will only be able to hear one of those items because we require six members to be present for a quorum for Planet, for a subdivision to be approved. But we can hear, uh, the zoning amendment that we have on the agenda, which only requires a quorum of five. So, we will only be hearing one agenda item and the two will have to be postponed until we can schedule a meeting at a later date to address those, um... Those items. And, of course, we can approve the minutes from the last meeting. And this is, you know, per the direction of our chairman, so-
Any question from any county commission, any commissioner for, uh, Mr. Smith?
If I might, I'd like to introduce our newest member, Jeff Koschka. I butchered that, and I apologize. That's the best I could do. Okay, that's what I meant to say. But anyway, thank you, uh, former mayor. You sat on City Planning, uh, Commission meetings in your former state.
Correct.
And, uh, and so, thank you and welcome. And, and we had, uh, one, um, of our commissioners to resign because of a conflict of, of interest with his, uh, daytime job, so that's, uh... And, uh, so I do apologize for, uh, for the delay.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you all.
Alright. As of now, I would like to call the Planning Commission to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call Rome?
Chairman Gardner?
Here.
Vice Chair Daniel?
Here.
Mayor Gillespie?
Here.
Vice Chair Chambers? Vice Marshal Allen? Ms. Carpenter? Mr. Hayden? Mr. Mullins?
Here.
And Mr. Koschka?
Here.
Alright, thank you. Let her know we do have a quorum. And with this quorum, we can only discuss item number two, that's for the zoning amendment from R5 to B2. And item three and four cannot be discussed because we need at least six members for the commissioner to discuss, uh, item, uh, three and four. Now, getting into business now, for the minutes of August 21st, 2025, has everyone got a chance to read the minutes? If so, do I hear-
Move through the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like signs, minimum pass. We do not have any old business, and it's gonna be postponed till November. And we got new business. And a new business, and it's a public hearing. And our new business, that's item number two, and that's a zoning amendment from R5 to B2. Location is 682, uh, Covered Bridge Parkway. Chad Jay and Mrs., uh, Peacock is, uh, representing, and this is a public hearing.
So here we have the zoning amendment for 682 Covered Bridge. Uh, here's just aerial view of it, uh, just off of Covered Bridge Parkway and just west of Sadie Circle. That's a closer view. And it's zoned R5, which is a high-density residential. And then future land use map has it as, uh, medium-density residential. It was previously zoned, um, B2. In, uh, 2007, uh, they had it rezoned to, uh, R5, um, to, um, possibility of, uh, more additional residentials, uh, coming along there on Covered Bridge.
Would you speak up so everybody in order can hear you?
Uh, to the left, we have the proposed lot where they would, uh, like to develop. And then, uh, across the street, there's, uh, Sadie Circle. And then here's just, um, north of, uh, uh, Covered Bridge. Uh, you can see there's, uh, Partners Pediatrics to the left over there. And then, uh, going south on Covered Bridge, um, just additional, uh, residentials. Any questions?
Do we have any questions as of now?
I have one. Um, the zoning of the vacant lot between this lot and the pediatric center is, is that O-1 or O-N-I, or what is that? It's shown on the-
That, that's correct. It is, uh, O-1, which is, uh, office, uh, zoning.
The letter from, uh, the individual who wrote a letter to us said it was zoned R5, so that is not correct.
No, sir, that's not correct. It's, uh, office space.
Alright. Any more questions? Alright, thank you so much. Alright, uh, is there a representative here for this, uh, rezoning?
Yes.
Alright, would you please come up?
Afternoon. I'm Chad J. Peacock. Alright. We're requesting the rezoning from R5 to R2. The intention for this is-
Would you speak in your mic so your audience can hear?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're requesting the rezoning of Lot 30 from R5 to R-B2, which was his original before it was changed to R5. This intent for this change is for Evolved Studios for the Arts are intending to purchase this lot with the plans to relocate their dance studio business to this location. Good fit, I believe, because there's a pediatric office with kids already going there, and this dance studio is for kids. This lot was originally zoned commercial when the subdivision was developed. The existing businesses in close proximity to this lot, as that was, uh, that, they're close, sorry, their existing businesses that are in close proximity of the slot is part of the original design as business. Adjacent Lot 29, which is the one y'all talked about a minute ago, is zoned for commercial. The county has this as a commercial vacant lot, even though it has changed to R5. Don't know how they can do that, but they did. Lot 30, along with all adjacent lots that are in the plat of Covered Bridge subdivision, was originally developed to be commercial HOA dues based on the commercial rate since Lot 30 is in the plat of Covered Bridge subdivision, instead of Covered Bridge Village, which is the residential area. Lot 30 was still getting commercial fees for HOAs.
Alright. Do we have any question from Mr. Chad at this time, right, and the commissioners? Alright. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll let you know that this is a public hearing. Is anyone else like to come up and speak? This is a public hearing. If you will, please come up, sign in, and, uh...
Thank you. Pleased, my boy sometimes gets over a pallet, so if I get too loud, just tell me to calm me down a little bit. I am here, my name is Roger Tensley. Uh, I have been, uh-
What's your address, sir?
Beg pardon?
What's your address?
633 Covered Bridge Parkway.
Thank you.
Okay. My night name is Roger Tensley. Just to give you a little history, that I'm not new in town, and just to make a speech, I've been in Prattville since 1967. I moved here, uh, I moved to, uh, Covered Bridge Parkway, uh, and in 2019 with my wife and I. And the reason we moved there, because it was zoned residential R5. And we've been looking for that. I've only lived in a residential area, and I'm so pleased that it, residential areas do stay that way so that we are protected, uh, on that. When I moved to Prattville, I moved with my late wife and two daughters in 1967. And the first house we bought was in, on, uh, Hughes Street in Prattville. At that time, Hughes Street was probably the last street, uh, going out of Prattville on what, now is Codford Road. At that time, there was about 8,000 people in Prattville. Now, what are we looking at, 40,000 people or close to that? And I purchased that first house in 1968, and I resided there with my family, uh, till my late wife passed in 2008. In that area, uh... When Covered Bridge Parkway was developed, and when we moved there in 2019, uh, the development of Covered Bridge was O1, R4, and R5. And the area that we're talking about now that's up for sale, uh, is an R5 lot. It is a residential lot that's been, uh, trying to be changed to a B2. This public hearing, uh, attempt to my knowledge, is to change that one lot from R5 to a B-B2. To do this, to me, would open up Pandora's Box and possibly make Zone Fives, or R5 Zones, be subject to Pandora's Box. It could be opened up at anybody, and I, I'm, we are against that. And, uh, that was a letter issued to the Planning Committee, I see John Chambers is not here, uh, concerning, uh, the petition to change the zoning. And one of the statements in that was, "Commercial activity is permitted under B2," which they're trying to change it to. "General business zone simply does not, is not comparable with the peace, tranquility, and safety reasonably expected in a residential neighborhood." Each of the, that's what's presented to the Planning Committee, uh, by one of the Sadie Circle-type residents, uh, on 9/15. As late as, uh, yesterday, I delivered a copy to each of the chamber, uh, commemorates, uh, district chamber commemorates yesterday in order that they would be able to see the concerns that we have, uh, with, uh, changing it, the residential to a business. But I do understand that there's a dance studio that does want to buy it. Uh, I do understand, too, that the Peacocks, I understand, and I know it, Chad, uh, bought the land with the intention of building a house on it. Why? Uh, you'd have to ask Mr. Peacock. But, uh, now he's up to selling it to a dance studio, of which is a dance studio is already right off in the shopping center, right adjacent to, uh, Fayetteville Avenue. In fact, it addresses on Fayetteville Avenue. So, there is a, the dance studio is already there, but now they want to purchase this land apparently, which is not, uh, good for the community. So therefore, I suggest to the, to honorable, uh, members up here that, uh, you reject the rezoning of that area because it is already zoned, uh, R5, and we appreciate anything that you could do to keep it R5 and keep the integrity of the, uh, single-family homes, uh, in this area that is already R5. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. This is, Ms. Mayor?
Mr. Roger, I'm glad you've come down and everything, and, uh, what would your thoughts be if it was an O1? That, um, maybe the dance studio could still be-
Well, I, I, I don't know, because adjacent lot is an O1, and I do realize that. Uh, that is a possibility, but the thing that we don't want in there, when you say a B2 business plan, that's a big spectrum. I mean, it goes a long way. It's a lot of things that could be there. Uh, and when you're in that area, uh, because there is an apartment complex up there, if you see the map up there, uh, that is, I, I forgot what it's, R4, I believe it is, but there's a lot of children walking and playing in that area, uh, on that. And so, we just kind of object to opening it up to maybe the person that wanted to put a dance studio may stay there, but then what happens if she doesn't? And all of a sudden, we get, could get anything that is recognizable in B2?
But as far as O1, if they, if the applicant was to come back as O1 later-
Uh, that's a possibility, you are, that would be up to the, the residents in R5 now to whether they want to, you know, come back to a hearing again on that.
Well, I appreciate you coming, appreciate your, your comments here, and if anybody else does come up, I'd like to hear their comments as thoughts as well as a potential O1.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Alright. This is a public hearing. If anyone else would like to come up and speak? Alright, sir?
My name is James Say, and I live on 1231 Sadie Circle. My wife and I purchased the lot up there on Sadie Circle last year and built a house on it. And we were very well pleased because of the subdivision being R5 and we're not gonna have to have something that will add a lot of traffic to it. As far as this zoning goes and what they're asking for, we, uh... The, the new zoning they're asking for is, is, looks to me like it's open to most any type of business. We lived in Destin, Florida for a while and had to contend with tattoo parlors being put in. I'm not suggesting that's what it is here, but it seems like that this zoning change would allow us something like that. We don't need any more traffic in there. I don't know where they're going to have area, or space to park. I'm not sure what the setbacks are gonna say for that particular lot. But we certainly don't need parking on Covered Bridge Parkway at times when they're coming to pick up children or let children off. Um, that's would be a horror in my book because there are so many cars that come through there, some of which are way too fast. I agree with Mr. Tensley that we would like to keep our subdivision as residential and would appreciate very much your, your consideration of leaving it that way and keeping us as residential. And I thank you, I will sign in here if you want me to.
Does anyone have any questions? Alright, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is it anyone else like to come up and speak? Just give him a minute to finish signing in.
I'm through.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Cherie Phelps, and I'm the realtor who has the property listed. And I just had a little bit of information, um, to give as far as it being a subdivision. Um, the prop, this lot is actually in a different subdivision than the other people who came up and spoke. It's in Covered Bridge subdivision, and those lots that are the houses across the street are in the village. Um, when this property was originally platted out and developed, it was two different sections. And this lot, I know, um, Mr. Peacock purchased it as a residential lot, but at the time that he purchased it, I don't believe that he understood that the covenants and restrictions where this lot is, falls up under, it falls up under the commercial side. And the covenants and restrictions, which I have a copy here, the, um, residential side is part of the covenants and restrictions, but it does not refer to that specific lot. That lot was never replatted into the village, therefore, if Mr. Peacock was, was to build a residential home, he does not have the covenants and restrictions that go along with a residential home. His covenants restrictions state that the, um, part, about the parking, it, it has rules about that, it has rules about signage. Well, you don't have parking and signage issues on a residential lot, so that was never changed. Um, so when some of the other people are talking about their subdivision, this really was not part of their subdivision. They, he even has HOA dues that are according to the commercial side, and he pays those HOA dues, and they vary, it depends on the maintenance of the commercial side. So, I guess what I was trying to make, my, my point was that this, um, that he's not in that subdivision. This lot is not in that subdivision, which is Sadie Circle, and just so happens, some of those houses are actually on Covered Bridge Parkway. Because you have the lot next door to him, which is Lot 29, which is zoned O1. And then, you have the lot to the further from that one that touches that lot, number 29, you have Partners and Pediatrics, which they've purchased two lots. And all of that was intended originally to be commercial. And you have the retainage pond that's back behind it, that's not very conducive to a residential home, to have a retainage pond back there. So, after Mr. Peacock purchased it and started meeting with his builder, he realized that this is actually more so a commercial lot. It's not, so he decided to buy a home, and then he asked me to put it up for sale. And when we were approached by this dance studio who's already in Prattville, they're gonna, um, build somewhere, they wanna stay in Prattville and not move to Millbrook or so forth, but they want, they're expanding, they're growing, and they're a young business. And when they approached us, we were like, "Sure, we'll try to get this changed so that it will fit." Now, the reason why it was picked as R, I mean, I'm sorry, B2, was because that's what was suggested to us, but we didn't know if a dance studio could actually fit or conform to a, an O1. I mean, we didn't know what we were asking for when we filled out the application paperwork. So, you know, if it, if a dance studio can fit an O1, which is the lot next door and the lots before that, then that would be great, but, you know, we're requesting you to approve this so that this business can relocate from where they're renting, they're wanting to build and plant roots into Prattville.
Okay.
Any questions?
I'm Theo Gooden, I'm the, um, I'm the buying agent, uh, for Kennedy Thomas is the owner of Evolved Studio for the Arts, and I've been friends with Kennedy for, I guess, going on 10 years now. My kids have, uh, grown up dancing with her, and, um, it's, uh, she wants to be a permanent fixture in Prattville. There's, you know, uh, all their friends, their, you know, and parents, you know, that grown up watching our kids, you know, dance together. And, um, we would like to see the dance studio stay in Prattville. She's currently in a lease in the mill, and she's looking to, you know, build a building and be a permanent fixture here in, in the city. And I think it'd be a great addition, um, and, um, it's, uh, I think, yes, it'd be a great thing for the, for the city of Prattville, or for the taxes and, you know, and, um, for the kids, you know, something else for kids to do. We, we pay a lot of money for our kids to dance, but it's worth every penny, 'cause I know where they are, I know their friends, I know their parents. It's, uh, it really is a blessing for, for me, and, um, that's all I'd like to say.
Alright. Do we have any questions from any commission? Thank you very much, sir.
Alright, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is it anyone else like to come up and speak?
I'll sign in afterwards. John Lee Finnegan, 211, Dear Trace. The only question I have, and I guess it's clarification, 'cause I keep hearing dance studio, but I was reading, uh, page seven of the packet, and it was the planning staff comments, and it says, "The applicant requests to rezone 682 Covered Bridge Parkway from R5 to B2. Proposed land use will be for a possible dance studio slash general business." And so, I, I'm just, that leaves it up, you know, when you say general business and stuff. So I just wanted the clarification that, yes, this is only going to be for the dance studio.
Alright. Do we have any questions? Any commission? Alright. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is it anyone else like to come up and speak? This is a public hearing.
My name is Catherine White. I'm a resident of Prattville. I'm also a small business owner, um, so I'm a bit familiar. Um, also, my daughter dances with Kennedy. Um, little back history, it was Center for Performing Arts, so it's been a long time. A lot of these kids moved over with Kennedy to Evolve. This is our sixth season. I don't know if anybody's looked at the plans yet. This is not gonna be a rinky-dink little place. Um, this is a state-of-the-art facility, um, better than anything else, um, that's offered in the dance studio world currently. Um, we have three spaces right now because we're outgrowing what we have. Kennedy is very professional, she's done an outstanding job. Brittany is next to her, and she is office manager, also very well-run business. Um, I can say that as a business owner and as, um, one of their customers. If, just thinking, if, you know, you guys have some new buildings around town, like something like swim prep, you walk, you drive by, I'm like, impressed. I have a baby that goes there. It looks amazing. That's the kind of thing she's gonna build. It's not gonna be, you know, an eyesore by, by any means. Uh, we also aren't loud people, and there will be walls. Um, we pick up kids, if anybody knows, uh, safety around children, it's parents, so, um, I wouldn't be concerned about neighborhood kids, and the neighborhood is across the street, there's not any, anything next to them, but, um, so it's a little bit of a different story. But just, that's, that's my two cents. I'm very proud of Kennedy, I'm very, very proud of our studio. So, I, it's an outstanding thing for Prattville to have, to be honest. Our kids actually, you know, it's not a Prattville thing, it's not an Alabama thing, it's not even a regional thing. I've probably been to seven states with my daughter dancing. Kennedy and Brittany both grew up dancing in Prattville, um, so very invested. And we have a lot of kids like that. They're, you know, training them for way far beyond, um, Prattville, which is pretty amazing because then the city of Prattville name is, you know, nationally recognized because these kids are coming out of here. Um, so, obviously, I'm just a proud mama, but I just wanted to give you my take on that, okay?
Alright.
And I'll sign in.
Do anyone have any question from the commissioners?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Could the petitioner come back up to the microphone, please?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you, you've heard the difference between the requested zoning and the, the O1 zoning. And apparently, it looks like- And apparently, it looks like maybe that was just sort of picked out as the logical one, but it sounds like maybe it isn't. As Mr. Mayor suggested, perhaps it would be better if you were requesting the O1 rather than the, than the, than the business. Is that something you might consider?
If it doesn't impede this dance studio.
Okay.
Because they're very proud of what they have. I mean, I've talked with them, I think they're serious on building.
We can ask the staff that question. My understanding is it would not. It just limits it to a smaller scope rather than the, than the...
Well, without, I haven't seen the plans. So I can't really answer that question without maybe somebody from the dance studio giving some detail on it.
Well, it's, it's really a matter of, the question is really the zoning, not the use of the, of the dance studio. It's, it's limiting the use in, you know, O1 rather than having a wide open. The letter that we received was concerned that it could be a car wash or, you know, a litany of things, none of which it would be. I don't think you could build, it's a relatively small lot to begin with. So my personal opinion would be it would be better suited to be the O1 rather than the requested zoning. Perhaps the...
Can you give me a minute to go talk with my Realtor?
Okay, absolutely.
And I'll come back.
And if I may add to it, what Mr. Daniel is saying is in a B2 zoning, you could pretty much put anything you want into a B2 zoning opposed to an O1.
Right.
And when you say this is what you're gonna do, and as the mayor said, in an O1, then that's kind of what you're based on. And from the information we just heard, you can say we can put a dance studio there, but then three months later, five months later, you could sell that property when it become B2. And they can put whatever they decide they want to put within that B2 zoning. And like you say, a service station, you could put a nightclub, you could just put pretty much anything you want in a B2. So would you get that some thought? And let's just see what's gonna be best for you. If that's what your desire is, is a dance studio, then you can do a dance studio in a O1 zoning.
Okay.
But...
Kennedy, give me one minute and I'll come back up here.
Okay. What, uh, hold on a second. Well, Mr. Smith, if you will, would you please explain to him the difference between a B2 and an O1 zoning?
Yes, sir. O1 zoning is lesser as far as the intensity would go. And the permitted uses in O1. So basically, for B2, you know, the bulk requirements, area and dimensional requirements, things like that, you do not have any front, side, rear setbacks. With O1, there's a 20-foot, 25-foot front setback, there is no side setback. And there's a 20-foot rear setback. And the uses for O1 are significantly, significantly reduced when it comes to any sort of commercial operation. O1 is definitely more for, you know, low-intensity institutional and studio-type uses. So that, that use would fit in that district. But we have several uses that I could read out on our use table if you'd like me to.
All right.
B2 is just our most permissive, basically, or not most permissive, but a very permissible general business.
Speak up, so your order, we can hear you now.
B2 is just one of our most permissible general business districts.
So if we agree to O1, will we have to come back for another hearing? Or could we apply today for O1, is that, and have a vote on O1?
Yeah. You can request for an O1 and of course... Yeah, it'll, it's gonna come before the council anyway. And they're gonna make the decision about it, O1. And what we're gonna do is make a recommendation from the planning commission.
Okay.
So...
So it'd be like a written request to have, or, you know, reapply for O1? We would do that, I guess, as soon as possible, is that...
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'd just like to clarify. O1, the district definition is the purpose of this district is to provide areas for business and professional offices and compatible, compatible uses with limited hours of operation, traffic and other characteristics that allow flexibility in terms of location with respect to residential areas and transportation infrastructure. Offices not including more than 10% of the total floor area involved in storage and sale of goods, merchandise may be permitted as special exceptions by the board, provided they're all, they meet all other requirements and any other restrictions imposed by the board to preserve the character of the neighborhood.
But it's presented to us now as B2, from R5 to a B2. And if we suggest to the city council, then all the detailed information that you have, then you can submit to them and then they'll decide what's what at that point. But the objective here is not to let it go to a B2 when you can put anything and everything into a B2 zoning. O1, yeah, is significantly different. However, and once it get to the city council, then they'll make the decision as to what they're gonna do or not do. From us at this point, it's a suggestion. And once it goes there... So, thank y'all very much.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right. Yes, sir.
Hold on a second, speak into the mic, sir, so it can be recorded.
My name's Jim, say, as I said earlier. When you, would you repeat the setbacks on the O1?
Yes, sir. There is a 20-foot, 25-foot front setback. There are no side setbacks and there's a 20-foot rear setback.
Okay. If I could show your attention to where they showing this particular lot? If you go where that clump of grass is back there, that lot goes straight down to those retention ponds. And I don't believe you've got enough room if you do 20 and 75 on there to have a building with a, to do anything. Just my opinion.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would like to correct him on that a little bit. From that hump he was talking about, it slopes down, drops, and then it levels out to that pond. Now, that is easy to build up. It don't go dropping straight down to the pond. It's, it's like a hump, the whole lot is, so it'll be built up, if that's the way they do it.
All right, well, the decision probably made by the council if we make the suggestion. And whatever happened from that point on, then is with the council as well as you.
No problem.
Thank you very much. Having said that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Mr. Daniel, would you read it in, please? Item number two. Resolution, zoning amendment from R5 to B2. Chad J. Peacock, petitioner, September 18th, 2025. Whereas Chad J. Peacock has submitted a request to rezone the property as described in Amendment A and shown in Amendment B. And whereas the subject property is located inside of the city limits at 682 Covered Bridge Parkway. And whereas the petitioner wishes to rezone approximately 0.56 acre property from R5 Patio Home Residential District to B2 General Business District. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on September 18th, 2025. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Prattville Planning Commission hereby does not recommend the zoning of said property from R5 to B2. So moved.
All right.
Second.
We open for discussion? Mr. Mayor?
I actually would like to talk with staff here a little bit in, you know, the plans we're talking about here today. And I can only assume that when someone is coming to your department, to the, uh, planning department to look at a project like this, how in-depth do they talk about the plans and how it fits on the, on the, on the lot? Because one of the things that's been going through my mind is parking. Parking, 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 because that is so, so important. And, you know, this is basically just a half acre. Was the plans ever discussed and talked about and how it might orient on the parking, on the, on the lot? I know where they were talking about business, which has a lot different setback. But parking is so, so important. So was that ever discussed in some of the discussions?
Mr. Mayor, we did ask for the plans, but the plans are not and were not ready. So we never received anything that would help us determine the site conditions and what, what's there compared to what is required for the site.
Well, thank, thank you for that. And again, if we can, try to be mindful of everybody's time. If we do have something like this, I would prefer that it not even make it, make it this far. Because there's still so many questions, so many questions that could impact one. And I know when a piece of property is zoned, and they might come in here with very good intentions of building a, a dance studio or whatever it might happen to be. But when they get that zoning, when they get that zoning, if it's not looked at very carefully, it can open up the Pandora's box. And so I believe that's why this planning commission needs as much information as possible. And let's try not to get it to this point without as, everything in, as highly possible to get to us, to make a good decision.
Mr. Peacock, would you please come up again? My question is, do you have a set of plans?
Do I have a set of plans?
Do anyone have a set of plans to, to address the questions that's been asked about this?
No, I'm the seller, I don't.
You the seller?
Yeah.
Who's gonna be the owner?
Good afternoon, my name is Kennedy Thomas, I am the owner of Evolve Studio for the Arts.
What's your address?
2070, the current address of Evolve, 2072 Fairview Avenue, Prattville Shopping Center.
Do you have a set of plans for this particular...
We don't have our set plans yet. I was waiting to confirm that this lot was going to be able to be changed over. I've been working with the architect, Johnny Rain, so they're in the works regardless. But I really wanted to keep the business in Prattville. That's where I grew up dancing, that's where all my dancers have grown up dancing. So it was for me to keep something in the community that means a lot to me, so...
Well, you know as well as I that, as the mayor was saying and others, is that parking is more important than anything else for control, especially when you've got a studio such as that. And what's the possibility that, that you could let our planning, uh, planning department see exactly what your plans are for that particular studio?
I can provide those as soon as they are ready. I can talk with my architect tomorrow and get those sent over right away.
All right. Any, any questions, anybody?
I have a comment. If you're gonna go O1 and you know the setbacks and you have the acreage, you could simply let somebody know the max size of the building with parking is X. Pretty simple. And then they wouldn't, then she wouldn't have to spend time with her architect building a 2,000 square foot building that won't be, it wouldn't be there.
I understand, it does sound simple, but by law, we can't design these sites. We have our minimum regulatory provisions such as minimum driveway aisles, parking, space widths and depths. In order for us to get an accurate number, we would have to basically design the site for the applicant on the spot. And that's very difficult to do. So we need a professional, them to engage a professional to get that to us so we can do a thorough review.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Just for clarity, what's before us is to not approve it. So if we vote yes, that's turning it, turning it down, which is still a recommendation to the council, city council, for them to consider it. If the applicant wants to take it to the next level, correct? Really mention all this for the, for our audience here.
Say that again so I can understand exactly what you're saying.
If we vote yes, that means it stays the same zoning as it is currently now.
As B2.
As B, as, no, no, as R5.
Is R5.
Right. And then the applicant still has a chance that if he wants to, even if we turn it down, he can still take it to the council because ours is a recommendation to the council for zoning. And so that's a part of the process here.
May I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, the other alternative is to table this. Unless you get your plan together to the point where you can make a logical decision about whether it'll fit.
Okay.
And then, and then he would simply work with planning to bring it back to us or not, depending on how it laid out. I walked that lot today, it's a small lot.
Mr. Merlin?
If you don't mind, I disagree. The city planning department has, they do have disapproved this. That's why our resolution says hereby does not recommend the rezoning. So if we vote a, we are killing this, this request for the rezoning at this point in time. Mr. Mayor is correct, that can, you can regroup and, and address to the city council once you kind of get your ducks in a row, so to speak. So that would be my recommendation to you, is figure out how big and what parking, as the mayor said, that's very, very important on that little tiny road that goes through there, I know. So that, that would be our, my recommendation, we vote yes to deny. It's a double negative, I know it. Voting yes to deny something. And then y'all take it to the city council after you've kind of gotten everything together as far as the size of the building, the parking and what your setbacks can be, possibly to a different type zoning, if that would work better.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Any more comments, question? All right, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by saying, raising your right hand. All opposed, lack sign. Thank you very much. Now, the next item on your agenda is a public hearing, but it's a preliminary. And we, with the members that we have, we cannot do a preliminary for item three and four. Now, we have a miscellaneous, and that's a Prattville Square Shopping Center, flat number three, site plan. Is anyone like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant called today and he asked to postpone this until the next meeting. He wasn't able to make it at the last minute. He called just before our meeting today.
Okay.
So that's pulled from the agenda as well.
All right. Are there any further discussion? Here none, meetings is adjourned. Wait, hold on before we do that.
John Lee Finnegan, 211, Dear Trace. I'm coming before you to ask, I don't know when you get your packet. Uh, John Lee Finnegan, two eleven, dear Trace, um, I'm coming before you to ask, I don't know when you get your packets, but ours that we see posted on the the city's website was not even twenty-four hours before this meeting. And it's happened before with other committee meetings too. And I'm just curious as to, you know, how you, how soon do you get your packets? And if the packets, granted, there's some changes, but they're just small changes. How soon do you get your packet that citizens aren't able to get them, you know, in time for the meeting? Granted, these, there wasn't too many um, subjects on today's meeting, but sometimes you guys have a lot of stuff and citizens like to research. So when do you get your packets?
Members?
The ones that, you know, that we see that was posted, you know, after what, three o'clock yesterday? So when do you get your packets? Just a little bit revisi, but you got, but when do you get the main packet? When did you get them, before the revisions?
The week before.
A week before?
Well, the end of the week.
Yeah, okay.
During the week before.
Well, it just seems that, you know, we should be able to get it, here it is Thursday, we should be able to get it at least by Monday or Tuesday. That's all I'm saying is, you know, I do a lot of research and I just don't understand that, that all of a sudden, it's just like the city council packet. We only get it the day before. And and citizens need to get involved in research and things of that nature. So all I'm asking is that you, you know, please, and this is also for the um, uh, HPC and the BCA. We just need packets posted earlier on the city's website. That's all I'm asking.
We'll bring that up for discussion and uh, thank you for that information, so.
Please, please.
So now we know we can move forward.
Thank you.
All right. Having said nothing else, all right, meetings adjourned. Thank y'all.
Hey, how you doing? How are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you. You look so good.
No, but you know what? I need to see what, the mic, the mic's not still on, is it?
Oh, yeah.
Turn that mic off. Turn the mic off.
I don't know how, look, we got it duct taped.
And it picks it up good, doesn't it?